We have a special group here, Mayor Ted Denton and the Park Board. We're going to make a presentation of an appointment. So Mayor?
Thank you. City Council members and distinguished guests, well, almost. I am here representing the city tonight. We're actually doing something that's a first. I've checked with several mayors around the state. Rochester's the first to do this. We are appointing an auxiliary member to our Park Board who's a high school student. No one else in the state has done this, folks. So this is a big deal. And our Park Board appointee is Ms. Emma Feldman. Ed, Emma, would you like to join me up here? Could we have a hand for her, please? And this letter says auxiliary Park Board appointment, March 14th, 2016. Be it known to all on this day, March 14th, 2016, Ms. Emma Feldman, a student in good standing of Rochester High School, has been appointed by the Honorable Ted Denton, Mayor of Rochester, Indiana, to the Rochester City Park Board. Ms. Feldman will attend regularly scheduled Park Board meetings on the second Monday of each month at 6:00 PM at City Hall. And the position is a non-voting position, but Ms. Feldman will be able to participate in the board discussions as a representative of the high school with the presumption of bringing ideas and thoughts to the group from the youth of the community. The position will be for a maximum of one year, after which time Ms. Feldman will receive a letter of recommendation for her participation signed by the Park Board members as well as the mayor. It's expected that Ms. Feldman will continue to maintain her status and good standing with the school board, maintaining her grade point average and conduct requirements as defined by the school. It's also hoped that the school will allow Ms. Feldman an opportunity to interface with all Rochester students in the capacity of her Park Board position. Emma?
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to recognize our Park Board members. Would you please stand and identify yourselves?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Hernandez. Welcome.
Bob Goodman.
Kenny Shidinsky.
Steve Coleman.
Mason Heide.
And Mason is the City Council representative to the Park Board. And we thank you all very much. And Emma, let's adjoint to your first Park Board meeting. Or adjourn to your first meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't see Adam here. I think he might be feeling a little poorly. But what was the process of the selection?
Adam, Strasser's, actually, we have freshman orientation beginning this evening. So Adam is going to start the freshman orientation and greet the parents, and then he will be over here. Mayor Denton came to Adam and myself and asked for a representative. And I know that in the future, we would like to grow the process. Emma's going to be a wonderful representative, and I know that she will serve us as well as the Park Board. And then moving forward, once we have a better feel for what this is going to look like and what this collaboration will be, we would like to grow it into more of a campaign-type process and voting process. But with Mr. Denton's timeframe and some of the testing, I-SEP testing and those things going on, we knew Emma would serve that role well. And so we've moved forward in that, and she will be launching that for us and for them, and then we'll move forward in regards to that.
Yes, our initial thoughts, we're going to continue this. This is something we talked about during the campaign. Who better knows about the park system than our students? So this is a first, like I said. And as Superintendent Vance said, the process will, I'm sure, get bigger and bigger and grow into campaigning in the high school, and then the process of voting, and then the mayor will appoint the person who wins the election. So it's not only a chance to expand the Park Board's knowledge by bringing some of the youth onto the Park Board, but it's also a chance for the high school to learn more about our government process and engage these young folks in our city government. Thank you all again. Are you ready? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Park Board will be adjourning across the hall to a meeting. Okay, at this time, we'll call a regular meeting to order. We'll have to pledge and hold the silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, well, get started with the dissent items of the minutes. We have minutes of the February 22nd, regular board meeting, minutes of the March 2nd, special board meeting, minutes of the March 2nd, study session. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, need motion to approve the minutes?
Sound vote.
Okay, motion by Sandy?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any other discussion? All in favor, right? Okay, motion carried, seven to zero. Now we'll move on to final.
As an update to the format that we're using, I'm going to go through and discuss the beginning and ending balances of the general fund with the expenditures and evidences as well. And then item J is the funds report, and that's where I'll go through and talk about the discussions that happened within each of these five funds as well. So general fund had a beginning cash balance of $519,912.94, $980,391.76 worth of receipts. And then $979,889.16 worth of expenditures, leaving an ending balance of $520,415.54 for the general fund. Debt service fund had a beginning balance of $1,355,85.52, receipts were $8,663.45 with no expenditures, so an ending balance of $1,363.748.97. Capital Projects Fund had a beginning cash balance of $795,025.54, receipts were $4,420, and expenditures were $58,133.87, leaving an ending balance of $741,311.67. Transportation Fund had a beginning cash balance of $910,801.5, receipts were $2,083.43, and then expenditures were $67,773.64, leaving an ending cash balance of $845,110.89. Last but not least, Bus Replacement Fund had a beginning balance of $230,824.33, receipts were $536.73, no expenses, so the ending balance was, or is, I should say, $231,361.6. That's it for the financial report.
Thanks, Val. Any questions on the claims? If not, need motion to approve the financial and funds report?
Sound vote to approve financial funds report.
Okay, motion by Steve.
I'll second.
And second by Jenny. Any other discussion? All in favor, right? Okay, motion carried, seven to zero. Okay, under Students Stakeover Focus, we have a few donations. Northern Indiana Community Foundation, the Rochester Telephone Company, for the Riddle PBIS, $150. Walmart Supercenter for Riddle PBIS, a bicycle. Enyrs True Value Home Center, Riddle PBIS, water bottles and outdoor game. Rochester Harveys, the Riddle PBIS combo cards. Dubiano's, Riddle PBIS, five one-topping pizzas. Northern Indiana Community Foundation, this is through the REMC's Operation Roundup. RMS National Honor Society for the Washington DC trip, $1,000. Northern Indiana Community Foundation, through the Suzanne and Richard Belcher Fund, Rochester High School Robotics, $250. Northern Indiana Community Foundation, through First Federal Savings Bank, high school robotics program, $250. Joe McCarter, the high school boys and girls swim team meals purchased at the state finals, $200. Optimus Club, high school robotics, $400. Rochester Kiwanis Club, high school life skill class for lunch and program, $100. Rochester Kiwanis Club, iKey Club for lunch and program, $100. Fulton County Waste District, high school FFA volunteering services, $75. Rochester Optimus Club, RMS eighth grade breakfast, $500. Fulton County Solid Waste District, high school city council volunteering service, $75. Any other?
It did go through our books, but the Optimus Club also donated $500 for our DC trip, but our parent organization's running that by just they do so much for us, I just want them acknowledged.
Okay, $500 for the DC trip. Okay, have a motion to approve claims? Put the addition of the Optimus $500 for the DC trip. Ready? For Sandy? Sandy? Okay, motion by Brad, second by Sandy. Any other questions? All in favor, right? Okay, motion carried, seven to zero. Thanks again for all the...
We're blessed.
It seems like each meeting, they get better. We are truly blessed with generosity and community. Okay, the overnight field trip with JAG.
Our JAG program held a regional meeting, and at that time, we had four students advance to the state round. Emily Hines, Brianna Zeiger, Kane Staudl, and Austin Chisowski, is that what you said? Advanced from regional to the state program. And I know that this is coming in after the overnight trip. One of the first glitches was we didn't realize that they would be providing the busing, the transportation. So actually, the JAG program and Work One Development provided busing for the students to go down to the state. And then there was a change in hotel reservations that the state made. So by the time Brenda had all of the paperwork in front of her, it's getting to you just a bit late, but those four were able to participate at the state competition after qualifying through the regional, and just wanted to recognize them as well.
Everybody have a chance to look at the application for field trips? And are there any questions? If not, need motion to approve the JAG field trip.
Sound vote.
Okay, motion by Lisa?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried, seven to zero. I see Adam come in. Proved his part of the program?
I think he was at the most.
Eric, okay?
We're ready for your presentation on valedictorian and salutatorian, as well as your recommendation for the weighted course changes.
Okay. Currently, Rochester High School names the valedictorian and salutatorian after the seventh semester of high school. So that would be after the first semester of senior year. With the way we're offering courses now, with weighted courses, we felt that it would be more fair to make that determination at the end of the eighth semester of high school, at the end of their senior year. The reason being, we have some classes now that are one semester weighted classes, and we can't guarantee that every senior gets to take that first semester. So the GPA could significantly change based on when your course is planned or scheduled. So based on my feedback from my staff and my guidance counselor, we feel that moving that determination to the end of eighth semester is a better choice. Do you guys have any questions about that?
I think we've talked in study session about it. Answered a lot of questions there. Anybody have anything else?
And this would begin with next year's...
Yes, this will start with next year's senior class. It will be effective at the beginning of next school year.
What was the part that held us back? Was that just the hand grading? And now that we're computer grading, does that make it go faster, do you think?
That's probably one reason. I mean, it does make planning for graduation a little more tight. Confesses all the things that you have to get done, but we feel like, you know, that isn't a reason to possibly deny a student the chance to valedictorian based on their full academic career at Rochester High School. Saying it's a more fair way to determine that.
We now often have almost a week, even a week, in between the end of year and graduation, where years ago, there were years that we'd go to school on Thursday and have graduation Friday night, and so that would be near to impossible.
I think the number of students taking college classes as well that second semester has increased dramatically as well, and we want to make sure that we're honoring that effort the second semester of their senior year as well, and continue to encourage them to do that.
Okay, any more questions? Thanks, Adam. You're busy and have to act.
I have one more thing.
Oh, you got one more? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on this implementation of the eighth semesters for this. So we need a motion to approve that.
I move that we change our valedictorian and salutatorian selection until the end of eight semesters at their high school.
Okay. And move, motion by Jenny, second by Don. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried, seven to zero. Now continue on with the leading.
Another item that we've been looking at at the high school is our current offerings that are considered weighted classes. What a weighted class is, is it's an incentive for students to take the most difficult and rigorous classes that you have at the high school. So a weighted class is on a five-point scale instead of a four-point scale. So if you get an A in a weighted class, you get a five-point addition to your GPA, whereas if you get an A in an unweighted class, it's a four-point addition. So it's supposed to be some incentive for students to take those most difficult classes. And typically, those are dual credit classes and AP classes that are supposed to be very rigorous and to the same standard that a college course would be for a student. So when we were looking at our weighted course list that we currently have, we felt there was some classes on that list that don't meet that standard of being a college-level dual credit or AP class. And you can unfairly skew a student's GPA to the high end by offering classes that are not extremely rigorous, that they're very likely to get an A in, and then get that five-point jump when they're not taking a very rigorous class. So what we'd like to do is pare back the amount of weighted classes we have, so that really what we're offering dual credit for are classes that are dual credit, or what we're offering weighted for are classes that are dual credit and AP-level classes. So it pairs it back to within half of what we currently offer. And to be completely fair, what we'd like to do is start this with the class of 2020, which will be the incoming freshman, so that everybody in the class has the exact same amount of attempts at weighted classes. So to make it a fair shake for every student. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Do you feel this will help with the enrollment of those classes, the fact that people won't shy away from them fearing...
That is the thought behind having a weighted course, is that even though it's very strenuous and rigorous, and you might not be able to get a 99 or 90% final grade, and that weighted class still allows it to not negatively affect your GPA.
Questions?
I appreciate Adam looking at what... It's always hard to define what is rigorous, because obviously, what is rigorous to one person isn't necessarily rigorous to someone else. And I think looking at AP or dual credit classes as that next level makes sense. And then looking at this, then what about Foreign Language III or Biomed III rose to that level?
Well, actually, at the start of this year, Foreign Language III was a dual credit class, and we continued using that same curriculum, even though we're not able to offer the dual credit through IU at this time. We're going to continue with that same college-level curriculum that we were utilizing before. So we feel like the course is still very rigorous and difficult, and we hope that in time, we'll be able to bring that dual credit option back for Foreign Language III.
Okay, I didn't realize that. So students in Foreign Language III were able to have the college credit as part of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Biomed is, as a group, is college dual credit. So to get the dual credit for Biomed, you have to complete all four years, and then you get the chunk.
Oh, okay.
So really, all of the classes are dual credit, but you have to complete them all in order to get it. So we felt the top two levels of that, you know, are a higher level of that, and they aren't dual credit. So before, it was Biomed II, III, and IV. We felt a more fair assessment was III and IV, because there seems to be an increase in the difficulty after that second year.
And then for the project lead the way, I see in our current weighted courses, it's all of them except for the introductory course. And then for the next, for the proposed, it's dual credit project lead the way. How many, what's the difference there?
We currently offer two engineering classes that are not dual credit. That is aerospace engineering and computer, CIM, I don't remember what the other one is, computer integrated manufacturing. They are good classes, and we think they have good purpose, but they're not currently dual credit classes. So we felt at this time, they should not be included. If they do reach the time where they become dual credit, we thought the phrase that would be included would allow them to then be on the tech background.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this, Adam. This is something that has been of great interest to me over the last several years, and I really appreciate what it looks like now. Thank you for doing that.
You have a question? Thank you, Adam. We need a motion to approve the weighted course change to be implemented with incoming freshmen.
I move that we accept the changes to the weighted courses beginning with the class of 2020.
I'm suffering now. Motion by Lisa, second by Steve. Any other discussion? Okay? Okay, motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Adam. I shared with you we'd be headed back over to freshman orientation.
Yeah, I'm trying to get rid. I think you're busy.
Tom, before Adam leaves, I would like to mention that I was talking to a friend of Tom's from Speedway, a man by the name Chuck Bennett. Chuck is now a guidance counselor. He taught with Adam some years ago, and he said, "We'd love to have him back." And I said, "You can't have him." Just want to let it be known that those who know Adam from his earliest days of teaching still want him back.
He's been a great asset. Great asset. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Not for sharing.
Okay, next item, approval to purchase and trade the maintenance trailer.
And I will respectfully turn this over to Valerie. She's had a lot of conversation with our maintenance crew and the reasoning behind this, and the proposals, and the three quotes that we received.
In your work packet, are three quotes for options on the maintenance trailer. The one that we have right now, it doesn't have any sides to it, and what it's used for is for the lawn mowers. Are driven on it, the ramps. The goal was to transport the lawn mowers around, all the different locations, mow and as you would with that. And then it was found that due to the lack of sides, it's a safety concern, and then the ramps on that the current trailer has, you get onto it, it's not very safe either. So what they've been using it for is for hauling dirt, mulch, topsoil, things like larger things where it's an easy scoop-off, drop-on type of deal. And they've, the company, or the, that we've, the current trailer was purchased from has offered to buy it back and trade us for a trailer with sides. It's a little bit shorter, which is why we get cash back in our pocket, because it's a little bit of a smaller size. It has that safety feature with the rails on the side, the ramps are, it's a full gate-down ramp, so there's no question of wheels falling off of the ramps. So the safety is insurmountable. I've talked to both Brian and Jim on the maintenance, and they're all for this trade. And I asked for more quotes from there, just to make sure that the due diligence was obtained of what options are and elsewhere in terms of how it is from there. So it's recommended. I believe the company is out in Anthony, I don't recall the name of it. Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's out in Anthony, and it's the, I should say, Elkhart, thank you, it's Anthony Street in Elkhart. But we get $765 back on the trade of the current trailer, and it's more practical than we need to make.
So we're trading in and getting money back. Sounds like a win-win.
Especially, you can't really put a price tag on safety, so...
Yeah, it's true.
It's amazing, is that much difference in, one's a wash, one gives us money, and the other one's $1,647 on top of our trade. So it's like an obvious choice there.
They will compare apples to apples. It's obviously a little bit shorter, it'll carry where we need it to carry it.
Exactly.
How old is the old trailer?
2012. 2012, I think I always said, "Oh, the old trailer."
One of the quotes. Okay. Okay, yeah, I just... Any questions? We need a motion to approve.
Do we need a motion to approve because there's a trade?
That was my...
Because this is within the spending limit, that you can just decide.
My concern was just being honest in regards to it being a trade, that we were a piece of equipment that was purchased through the school, that everybody had that knowledge, that we would be trading that in. It was just an effort to be transparent with our equipment and what we were doing with it.
The fact that we're getting money back, Tom, that's...
It's a smaller trailer, just to be transparent. It's a 16-foot trailer we have now, we're going down to a 14-foot trailer.
Just has a full width ramp, we're down to a partial.
Exactly.
They hold lawnmower on too. Okay, have a motion? Looks like Tech Works would be a bid we'd accept.
I think a motion we'd accept, Tech Works bid that they will pay us back $765. We get the 7x14 trailer, and we trade in our 8x16 foot, 2012 trailer.
Okay, motion by Brad?
Second.
Second, please. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any motion carried, seven to zero? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next item. We have personnel report. Designation, Genevine Pittman, Agen and Brockton's third grade eternity leave, last day, March 18th. Make sure I understand, Pittman is currently doing that and is going to...
Correct.
Okay. Then retirement of Paul Hellstern, middle fifth grade teacher, to end of the 2016 school year. Then family medical leave, Paul Hellstern, leave date is March 21st, and will end at the end of the school year. end at the, end of the school year. Are there any questions? If not, we need a motion to approve the personnel report.
Sound moved.
Getting motion by Jenny. And second by Sandy. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Do you have somebody to take the, the term leave?
Motion carries seven zero. You'll need somebody to go in for Jenny.
Additionally, later this afternoon, your, there is a list of spring coaches that was submitted, and I know that was late. I would recommend if we could to approve those hirings. I know it was submitted at the last minute, and there are a lot of names on there. The board would like to wait until next month. That's very much understandable. Many of those names are seasoned coaches and are returning to us again this year. So would respectfully like to bring that to your attention as, as one of the personnel report items that possibly we could take care of this evening.
Did the pay remain the same as last year?
The pay would be based on, at the, in the fall, we adopted a new collective bargaining agreement, and part of that was the adjustment within that ECA schedule. We cleaned a lot of that up. We added a new sport and new activities that the school has brought on as a district. And at the same time, we went through and cleaned up those things we no longer offer. So what you see there would be reflective of what was adopted this fall in the collective bargaining agreement.
Will the board like to do, if we gotta wait till the next meeting, there's no urgency on this?
No. Spring sports are starting, so as soon as we return from break, they will be in full cycle.
Does anybody have questions, would like to wait till next meeting, or do you go ahead and take care of it tonight?
As far as I'm concerned, I don't know the voice, but most of them are familiar names, and those are teachers that have already been vetted, so I don't have any concerns there.
All right. There a motion to approve? Sound moved. Hey, Sandy made a motion to approve the schedule for the spring coaches.
Second.
And second by Don.
I do have a question.
Oh, question, okay.
Yeah. Ted or Superintendent, do you know if the new state requirement for the assistant coaches to be, to have the concussion training, which is coming down the pike for all schools, we were on our way to having our own good policy, it's been taken out of our hands. Do you know if that includes volunteer assistants?
The way that we were treating volunteer assistants, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if they are a volunteer assistant who could potentially be left with a group of kids by themselves for a long period of time, then they would receive that training. If they were an assistant in a larger group, it's going to be left with those students, then they would not necessarily need that. And we are gearing up to present that concussion training and additional training over spring break this year so that everybody will be ready once spring sports are, are going.
Okay, that's, that's, that's our decision, right? That's, that's what we're doing, but the state is having their own.
State adopted a new statute that, that comes into effect June one.
Is it June one?
Yeah, it'll be June, June one.
And, and does that require all volunteer assistants?
Okay.
That'll be a part of Neola's new packet in that way. And honestly, because we chose to include most coaches in there, we can exceed what the state requires.
Yeah, but as we were exceeding what the state required, they just upped the ante at the legislature. That's, that's where the question is right now.
Well, I, I just wouldn't want to, we have a lot of volunteer assistants, I think that's wonderful. And I wouldn't want to overburden volunteers, you know?
But concussion training, Kentucky's planning on volunteering out too. I, I think, and this may be some for study session, maybe not in a board meeting, but I think all those volunteers should have at least a concussion training, just to cover us. And it's not so much, so hard as to inconvenience you or something.
It's not, it's not hours and hours.
No. I think there's an online course, and I think Christina does it as well. It's not a burden. And frankly, I think we all feel better as coaches having that at least under our belt. I can't speak for all, but that's the way I perceive it.
Any other questions? Do you read motion? Second? Well, I thought you said question, you say second is the question?
I have a question.
So we got a second? Okay, we have motion second to, to approve. All in favor, right? Any motion carries seven zero? Thank you. Okay, approval of Jason Snyder's contract.
At our last meeting, the board approved Jason as the interim principal through the June thirtieth date when all administrative contracts come to closure. Kudos to Brenda Troyer for really going through. We had to make sure that we took care of Jason's teacher contract first, and then we'll come over to an administrative contract. Brenda and I met with Jason last week in regards to solidifying the number of days that would be on that contract because we have that June time where we're really not in session, but administrators are most certainly working in, in gearing up for the next school year. So it was agreed upon that Jason's contract would be for seventy-one days at the standard pay rate that would be reflective of his three years of administrative experience. So those seventy-one days would equate to twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars for his administrative contract. And information was sent to you in regards to how we figured out the teacher contract and then rolled him over to an administrative contract and what was reflective of the days in June that he would be expected to work.
Anybody have any questions? No, we need a motion to approve Jason Snyder's contract. Sound moved. Okay, Brad. Second by Sandy. Any other discussion? All in. Any motion carries seven zero?
Still going well there.
It is. And Jason was very disappointed he couldn't be here this evening. He's feeling under the weather, and he actually left a little bit early today, so sent his apologies and, and was anxious to hear that everything would help him. So I'll make sure that I text him and let him know that.
And just a comment on that, too. It was very fair, of course, for him to have the administrative start February twenty-ninth. That was when we approved that moving forward. But in our December meeting, we did, knowing that Mrs. McMahon was on family medical leave, that he would step in for those times, and that was part of his ECA pay. But he has really stepped in and filled that position well, and I hear that from multiple, multiple areas when I'm in that building.
He's done a nice job. He's joined our administrative team in our meetings, and he's chimed in and moved in really well over there, so we're excited about the things that he's doing.
Any other business?
Just a reminder that on April seventh, we will have our first evening study session. It's an attempt to allow more people in the, in the community to be able to attend those evening sessions. So we will meet on April seventh at six P M. at Central Office there in the boardroom, and we would invite the community to attend. If you'd like to see that behind the scenes work, Sandy was just commenting with the weighted courses that's been discussed for months and months and months, and then you see a three minute snippet here. So we want to invite the community and see what these conversations unfold and, and how that comes to fruition here at the board meeting. So again, April seventh at six P M. Last year, the board approved Open Swim for the pool as we deemed it appropriate to open it up after sports were concluded and those seasons had ended. So we anticipate the opening of the pool on April thirteenth. We will have it open on Monday and Wednesday evenings from six to eight P M. if anybody in the community would like to join Open Swim. Just a gentle reminder to parents, I'm sure students are aware, but to parents, at the conclusion of school this Friday, we will start our two week spring break. So next week, we would be off for spring break. And then intercession is March twenty-eighth through the thirty-first. So if there are still students who need that remediation time, please contact your building level principals and counselors, and we'll do our best to make sure we get them in for remediation. The Sentinel did a really nice article, and, and I know that our tech team has worked on posting on our website, the e-learning weekend is scheduled for April ninth, and there are contact numbers and office hours, everything that you'll need to know about e-learning. And then each of the building principals will be sending home their own information. It'll look a little bit differently for each of those building and grade levels, we want to make sure that the information going out is appropriate for each of those. So parents will be seeing that come home and a lot of communication there. And then kudos to Julie. The board is transitioning to Board Docs. It's a program that will go paperless, and Julie was able to get that information in. So our anticipation is that next month, we will be completely paperless, and both the board and, and the community will be able to see everything right there on our home website and link to Board Docs, and you'll see the agenda in its entirety and, and those things that are necessary to run the meeting. But hopefully without the paper, to the best of Julie and my ability to get that to you. So I think that's all that I have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments?
Could you imagine additional training?
Jenny wanted me to share, and I shared with the administrative team and with the board and with our district as a whole, that the week of April eleventh, I will be representing Rochester Schools at Johns Hopkins University, the educational portion of that. It's in conjunction with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Rochester was seen as a front runner in regards to how we track data, how we look at early warning intervention signs with our youth, mind determination, and conversations at the state level to make sure we continue to do that through, through Pivot and through Five Star and having those communications with parents. They appreciated very much our collaboration with four counties and having those in each of our buildings and, and the philosophy that if we don't have students who are mentally, emotionally, and physically sound, we're never going to get that education to them. So I will be representing our district, and hopefully that will open some doors and, and some communication at a different level that we can bring back to Rochester. And they are noticing that we're on the forefront in that. So it'll be a great opportunity. So thank you, Jenny, for mentioning that.
Isn't that a little more than representing our district? Isn't there only one person for the state?
There's one person for the state of Indiana, and then there's a superintendent, I believe that he is from Georgia, who will be representing as well. So we're, I'm honored to represent the district.
So to translate, you're being very humble over there. And the district as a whole, teachers and administrators are doing great job.
Absolutely. We are, I am surrounded by wonderful people who engage in that same philosophy and, and really rally around that. And when I shared with the administrative team what that might look like moving forward, there was a lot of excitement. And, and I think that so many times, people believe that we come in at eight and we leave at three, and, and we share educational materials, but our staff does so much more than that. And we are blessed and humbled by the, the personnel that we have here.
It is really a big honor for Jana, and we're blessed to have her, and have her represent our school system there. And, you know, people across the country don't hear about Rochester Community Schools, so that is quite an honor. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Looking forward to it. Hopefully it'll open some more doors, and sometimes the best, just being able to sit down and brainstorm and listen and learn from others is, is, is a lot of what you can bring back and share. So I will be thankful and grateful to do that for our district.
Anything else, board?
Well, between you and the mayor, we are going.
Tina? Tom, I found a digest of the bill about coaches, and it is effective July one, twenty-seventeen, so we've got a year.
Okay.
And then once the program starts, the Indiana Department of Education has to establish what the program will be, then it has to be taught by a physician. So even if Christina knows everything she does, and is very, very effective at it, I'd like to find a doctor, and I assume that means they'll be putting on, collecting on state support. But there is no distinction between volunteer coaches and, or, since it's coaches and paid coaches.
So it's a little more extensive training than, than a doctor involved.
Right, but it'll be a year off.
And I think we're well on our way to making sure that we meet that, and we're going through those trainings, that communication is happening, and, and we know what that entails. I feel like we're, we'll be on board when I hear that.
Anybody in the audience, anything?
Open swims, is there a cost to that? Because I know I'll be getting those phone calls.
There is. I'll email that out to everybody. There are, there's going to be a per evening cost, and then there will be family passes, so I'll make sure that I email that all out to building level. That's a good point. I'm sure that will, that'll be coming up.
Thank you.
Good question, Jenny. Anybody else? If not, thanks everybody for coming, we'll adjourn the meeting.